Please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Unmute, Peter.
Peter, you're muted.
Sorry, here.
Okay.
Peanut butter off.
Alderman Wood.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley, Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Eugene, you're muted also.
I'm here.
Okay, Alderman Catalano.
Here.
And Alderman Messina.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. I need approval of the minutes of April 24, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? No corrections. Have a roll call on that, please.
Oh, you don't need a roll call.
You don't need a roll call. All in favor.
All in favor, go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next is a report and recommendation for approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Contract Integration and Upgrades to the city's SCADA system in amount not to exceed $46,800. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
He's muted.
You gotta unmute yourself.
You just muted, no.
Can you hear me? Plug the phone cord back on the wall, Eugene. Could you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we hear you.
So, the SCADA system, what plant is that for?
Chairman, this is Director Lang, if I can be recognized.
Go ahead.
This is located at the North Wastewater Treatment Plant, but it is used for all of our lift stations and water pumping stations also. It's all kind of centrally held there at North Plant.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Quick question, on the SCADA system, do we get any other quotes?
Go ahead, Director Lang.
We did not. Concentric integration kind of hosts our system, they installed it originally. You know, as far as the equipment goes, maybe I'll defer to Director Case on some of that.
Yeah, so for the, for the equipment, we're using the scale technologies, which is also the same equipment we have at City Hall, and that's going to provide us with the ability to actually sync back and forth data from City Hall to wastewater as kind of a disaster recovery scenario. So we'll have that ability, which is, which is quite nice.
So there's a tension.
The equipment was actually purchased under, under last budget year, when we had it in the budget to, to upgrade the hardware itself, but I believe this project is also the replacement of many of the other SCADA parts, such as, you know, configurations, some of the dialers, things that are, that need to be replaced, that are older, that weren't just server equipment per se.
Okay, I have one more question, please.
Go ahead.
As far as the seven years, is that typically how long that system will last?
Can I take that, Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So, we were lucky on seven years, it probably should have been upgraded and replaced a little bit sooner, but I'm sure most of you know that my, the way I kind of handle things is keep it alive as long as possible and spend as little money as we can until, until replacement is absolutely needed. So that, that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions out there?
No.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next is the approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Compass Mineral America, Inc. for the fiscal year end in 2021, the Volks Rock Salt Contract in the amount not to exceed $84,375.20. That is my motion.
Second.
Good question.
Any questions?
Yep.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Yeah, it's for Director Lang.
Go ahead.
This is the Rock Salt for the Streets, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
What, what did we, what did we use last year? We, obviously, we had a late winter. We didn't use all of our budget last year, did we?
Correct, last year we used about 580 tons, we purchased about 594, which was 46 tons lower than the minimum that we were required to purchase, so Compass Minerals is going to hold that additional 46 tons on us at no additional cost to be delivered next year.
That's what I wanted to know, how much we had left over, if they were going to hold or we got to pay for it. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So my question is, how, how much salt is this that we buying?
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Chairman. We estimate that we're going to need around 800 tons. Now, we're required to purchase at least 80% of that number, which is 640 tons, but we have the capability to purchase up to 130%, which would be slightly over 1,000 tons. So it's kind of a range, you know, given that we're not sure exactly how much we're going to need in any given year, it's very dependent on the weather and other factors.
Any other question?
How many ton, yes, Tony, Sonny here, how many ton does the 84,000 give us?
The 84,000, sorry Chairman, the 84,000 is for the 130% figure, which would be 1,040 tons.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If, if there are none, we have a roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
Motion carries. And last is approval and agreement between the City of Wooddale and Brothers Asphalt Pavilion for the fiscal year end in 2021, the Capital Road Resurfacing Program in the amount not to exceed $570,028.49. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, I, I have one question, Director Lang, in reference to the George Street, I know there was, you know, an agreement with the village of Itasca, and it says there that they're not ready to do theirs in the near future, what do they mean by that?
I can jump in real quick, City Manager here.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, originally, we had reached out to Itasca, and we had brokered a tentative deal awaiting a formal IGA, but in the interim, before we were able to pass the IGA, the COVID-19 crisis came upon us, and Itasca decided to cancel its road program for the next year, which essentially put that project on hold as we need to partner with them. They decided not to do their capital plan next year.
Okay, didn't we do a, a project on Mill Road back in 2015 or '14, if I'm not mistaken?
We did, that is correct.
And didn't we bill them for it, like safety project, we can't bill them for it, or?
Uh, they, they wanted to partner up, and they were, it's kind of a longer story, it's probably better for, for another time, but needless to say, they're not moving forward the capital plan this year, and it's probably better if we just delay until they're ready in the specifics.
So, can we send a letter to all those Red, Wooddale residents on George Street, because a few, quite a few of them have been asking me about the project, and of course, I told them it's going to be, going to happen this year, now it's not going to happen, is there any way that the city can reach out to each individual residents on that street and explain to them why?
Yeah, we can probably craft some sort of letter, I'll talk with Director Lang, and we'll, we'll get something together for sure.
Thank, thank you. Go ahead, any other questions?
I have a question then.
Go ahead.
So, are we awarding this contract then?
Yes.
Hello?
This is Director Lang, Chairman, if I can recognize you.
Yes.
Yeah, so in place of George Street, are you questioning specifically for George Street, Alderman?
Yeah.
Yeah, George Street will not be included in this fiscal year's capital project, it's going to be pushed off to a later year when Itasca is ready to, to partner with it. Instead, we've replaced George Street with Apollo Court and Roy Drive, and those will be included in this contract.
Was it the same price?
Yeah, it worked for, as far as engineering costs were concerned, it worked out to the same, we simply replaced George Street with Apollo and Roy. Construction cost-wise, it worked out pretty similar also, we actually came in $80,000 under budget, from what we had originally planned in the CIP.
All right, let me ask you this other question, if you don't mind, Chairman.
Go ahead.
A, a Pottle and Roy Drive, where was it on the street study, and what conditions were they in, now that we doing it that way?
They were pretty bad.
That ain't what I'm saying, Tony.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chairman, this is Director Lang, if I can be recognized.
Yes.
Uh, Roy Drive on the most recent street study was a two or one failed, and Apollo Court was a three, very poor.
Okay, I'm fine then. I was saying, if we're going by the street study and we're moving stuff around, we need play by the rules.
And I'm sure we are.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
I got a question for Director Lang. Over at Apollo and Roy, I know we had like a water main break right around the corner, and we've had a few, I believe it's on Apollo, that street's a mess. Just out of curiosity, did we even look at that?
This is Director Lang. We are aware of a, a number of breaks that occurred, especially on the intersection, the northwest intersection there. The water main is actually located in the parkway, so it's not a major concern for the road project. We have kind of focused in on possibly extending the sewer down Apollo Court to give the, the properties there the capability of connecting their some pumps directly to the sewer line. That's an idea that we're tossing around, that we may bring to the committee later on.
I have a follow-up?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
And basically, that was going to be my next question, because that's one of the areas that called us back, doesn't have any storm sewers, and when are we, on our big stormwater project, going to start redoing the sewer lines on these streets in that, in that end of town? Because, I, I mean, if we're going to be there in two years, are we going to rip up the street that we're going to resurface right now? Are we looking at that?
We absolutely are, I'm sorry, this is Director Lang. That's one of the reasons why Robin Lane was avoided under this road resurfacing program, because there is some work planned in that area under the next phase of the stormwater projects. We wanted to avoid, you know, redoing the streets and then having to rip them up again for storm sewer work. So it's definitely on our radar, it's something that we take into consideration when planning which streets are going to get done.
Can I, can I just follow somebody?
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
No. So, my understanding is when we started the, the Ward 2.3 stormwater improvements, that all the streets...
Hold on, Mayor, is there somebody talking? I can barely hear you, somebody's talking in the background somewhere.
With somebody else.
If you're not talking, can you put yourself on mute?
Yes. No, no, it's not me, I know that, I'm just hearing.
Somebody's wife is talking, I hear you.
Somebody's wife or somebody, it's overtaking you.
I think it's Sonny.
Okay.
There you go.
So, that whole area, my understanding was we have 10 and 12-inch pipes or whatever, and to 18 and 24 or 30s in that, in that whole area, and that's, I know we got, probably going to have about five phases by the time we're done. Are we considering that stuff? Because I really don't want to be ripping something up, even if we're going to spend $150,000 in, in two years, we're going to come in and put in this new storm sewer, it's kind of a waste.
Yes, we've coordinated our road program to kind of work around the planned work for the Ward 2.3 stormwater project.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If there's no other questions, can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Sorrentino.
You're muted, Danny.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next is items to consider at future meetings, we have engineering standards in June, and we have the inflow infiltration, which is groundwater filtered into the city pipes, and that's coming in June as well. Any other items to consider?
Nope.
If there's none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee to order, let the minute taken reflect that the same members are present. First, I'd like to get a, a motion to approve the April 9, 2020 Finance meetings, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, corrections, changes?
There is a correction, it says, we're going to charge them for 25,000 gallons of water, I think that should be 2,500, I believe.
We're, we're going to credit them for 2,500, I think, right?
Yeah, well, 25,000 according to that, so I'm saying needs to be changed.
All right, so we can, we can make that correction from 25,000 to 2,500?
Thank you.
Any other corrections, changes? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None, that passes. Next, before I get into the next four reports, I think that there was one other that was supposed to be on this list, and it didn't get on there, maybe Mr. Murmice or Mr. Wilson, the video gambling license fee waiver, I thought that was going to be one of the items that was on there.
Yeah, there are.
Huh?
Art?
Yes.
So liquor licenses and video gaming should all be one thing, it should, because the applications all go out together, so that's, honestly, that's one item, that should be one item, it should say liquor license and video gaming, you're correct, but we handle it as one item, because they all go out at the same time.
Well, they might go out at the same time, but there's no language to address that, so I just want to make sure that we're addressing both. City Manager Murmice, go ahead.
Yeah, sure, the, going to what the mayor said, with the item three on finance, the liquor license fee waiver, since anybody that has a video gaming license needs to have a liquor license, that extra $25 would just be assumed part of the fee waiver. We omitted that from the, the item accidentally, but the $25 fee waiver does join itself with the liquor fee waiver, so we can act on that tonight, it would just be lumped in the extra $25.
Okay, just so that we, we made mention of it, and that we got it. Okay, so I'll move on to the report and recommendation, the first is commercial occupancy certificate fee waiver. I'll make a motion to approve that. Are there any questions?
Hey, could you, could I, how much, how much is that, anyone know?
Mr. Wilson, you want to take that?
Sure, yeah, I can take that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, while each business has a different fee, depending on a few different factors, the bottom of the memo that we did put in, the annual revenue that we're collecting on this program is approximately $140,000. So while it does vary a little bit from business to business, the total impact to the city would be around $140,000 for this particular fee waiver program.
Okay.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Wes, Alderman Wesley?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, Mayor, please, go ahead.
Just, so this is going to be for one year, and being, are we starting, I don't know if everybody's paid, paid up for April because of everything that happened, or are we starting in, in May, if we collected? So, so we got a, a clean breakpoint of where we start and stop, because it'll be for one year, everybody pays at a different time with the COC. Is it, we have that squared away? Probably a question from the state, I guess.
Mr. Murmice or Mr. Wilson, you want to take that?
Yeah, I can take that. Basically, I know there's different zones of the city, so we will go back and look to make sure that whatever zone we stopped at would be where it would, the zone before that would be where it was applicable through, so just for argument's sake, say they got through February, because the whole thing started going apart in March, so if everybody through February had been taken care of, then this waiver would go through that group in February, and then it would start in March. The people in March had already paid, then it would pick back up in April of next year, so we'll work with CD to make sure we have the timing on it correct, but it's just one year from wherever the last zone was paid for and completed via February or March, whichever one that is, that's when it will go until, for this particular program.
Could I?
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, I haven't, one more question. So this is waiving the business license for the, the businesses that were not open?
Everyone.
All businesses.
All businesses.
So that's dual and everything, okay. Jewel, Target, everything, okay. That's all I want to know.
Okay. So we have, are there any other questions?
No.
Okay. We have a motion with...
Go ahead, no question.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah. That passes. Next, small business, all business utility payment plan. Mr. Wilson, do you want to touch on this? How this is going to work?
Yeah, sure. So, currently, we do not engage or really allow businesses to go on the payment plans for their utility bill, and we have seen some phone calls from businesses in the last six weeks, that they're having some difficulty paying, and they wanted to go on payment plans, you know, due to downplaying their business, which is obviously a known commodity across the country at this point. So, just in an effort to not be as burdensome to those businesses, when they're trying to get their business back, trying to get their employees back, with having to try and pay the entire utility bill right out of the box, looking to offer a payment plan to them, similar to what we would offer a resident, just to kind of help them ease back into normalcy, whatever that's going to be, once they reopen. So, again, we're just trying to extend the same courtesy and program to the businesses that we would offer a resident, which we currently do not do as a standard operating practice.
Right. No, I think that's a great idea, especially for the closed businesses, even though they're not pumping water, they get bills, and the ones that are marginally getting by are still pumping water through it, so I think it's a good idea with all the things going on. Do we have any other questions or concerns?
I, I have one question.
Peter, Alderman Jacob? In the memo, it says that this is not going to happen till Phase Three and Four, before you guys do this, so do we need to change the motion on it? But to, to your, to your question or concern, and I touched base on this with Director Wilson, I think that, that he was using the governor's plan as a target of when and how this kicks in. I, I think it should kick in like now, because people are hurting now.
Right.
I, I think to the point that it was going to end at some point. I, I personally would rather have a, a date, so whether we use six months or, or eight months, and maybe Mr. Wilson wants to address this a little more, I'd rather have a timeframe, because everybody knows when it starts and when it ends, as opposed to referencing an ambiguous nebulous guide put out by a, a third party, if you will. Mr. Wilson?
Sure, thank you, Chairman, yeah. So, I still don't understand where, where some of the, the question on this lies. So, our payment plan currently revolves around, you have to pay your current bill plus a portion of what's passed through, so this really needs a math, say you have $1,000 that's passed through, and your normal bill is $200 a month, you have to pay your current bill for, you know, $100 a month, so it'll take you 10 months to get caught up on that payment plan. So while we're not charging penalties and doing the disconnection process right now, for us to do a payment plan, if the business isn't open, and they can't pay their bill this month, they probably can't pay it next month, because they're still not open, so the payment plan is self-defeating at this point. So, we're not, that's why we're not going to enter into any payment plan until we begin charging late fees again, and start doing the colinkred notices, the disconnects, which we're not going to do until more businesses reopen, and again, there's some normalcy, that's why we kind of put the Phase B and Four in there. So we felt that trying to do this right now, we're not charging penalties, because everything is still shut down, again, the payment plan doesn't work right now with how things are operating. So, really, I mean, if we want to take out three and four, and say, you know, within the next six months, you know, once they open back up, that's fine, but until the business is opened back up, it doesn't make any sense, the way our payment plans are constructed, to enter into a payment plan with them, so, as we're trying to talk some language to give us some time for these businesses to open back up, to get back up onto their feet in the payment plan. If we don't want to say six months, and the business is open for seven, then they're outside of the box. So, I mean, I'm fine with the timeframe, but that's kind of why we use the more nebulous third-party language in this particular case.
Can I jump in real quick, City Manager?
Yeah, Manager Murmice, go ahead.
Yeah, sure, just to reiterate what Director Wilson was talking about, we really kind of tried to, to organize this the best we could, and, and like he said, the thought process was immediately, right away, we realized there would be a problem with businesses, particularly small businesses with COVID-19, and that was before we even started kind of fielding those calls from the businesses. So we had already administratively started, obviously, waiving water shut-offs, waiving the accumulation of late fees, but we, what we did not have the ability to do was work out payment plans with businesses, as Director Wilson had said, we had historically only done that with residents, so we thought this would be a nice program with the times for the businesses. The reason why we chose Phase Three and Four to start the payment plan is because if we picked an arbitrary date, as you know, Governor Pritzker, tends to extend things, now he's got the reopen Illinois Plan, and those plans aren't, there's no date involved, it's based upon quantifiable data with COVID-19 testing results and whatnot. So the thought was, we do the phases, because then we know that the businesses are linked in his Restore Illinois Plan, so essentially, the plan is already starting from a Wooddale perspective with businesses, and we're currently not charging them those fees and not shutting off their water, but we don't have the ability to finalize the payment plan with them until after their business is open. So that's why we put Phase Three or Phase Four, because they're simply not open, and we just don't have the information to start their plan, but we have essentially already started a plan, if that makes sense. I, I believe it does, but if I'm confusing somebody, let me know, but we have started, this is just kind of the closer of that process then, once we get to that point and restore Illinois.
Right, and, and I get that, and I understand, you know, the, the logic behind that, but it's still, you know, nebulous and ambiguous, that timeframe of, and then what does open mean, because I could choose to open and not choose to open. That's why I like a, a timeframe, cause there's a couple things at play in that. And if we set it six months, right? And, and it had to go to eight, I'm sure it's easy enough to come back and the council would go, yeah, we see that everything's going bad and we'll extend it another two months. I, I just always liked that there isn't any debate over when things are open or they're not open. And right now, we live in a world where nobody really knows what's going on from day to day, so any stability we can give to any program, i.e. a specific start date or specific end date, to me, just adds a little clarity, a little light to a really dark muddy situation that we're in. That, that's my point of view. I mean, we, we're gonna vote on it and we can agree or disagree. I, I would prefer to see it as, as a date, and that date can always be extended, and I would make it the longest date everybody's agreeable to. If that's six months, it's six months, if it's nine months, it's nine months.
I've got a question, or a comment, actually.
Sure. Mayor, please, go ahead.
Right, when the businesses start opening, I mean, there's talk of this 25%, then maybe go to 50, maybe go to 75. I mean, this could be, this could be a long process. So, I mean, five or six months to start, you can always push it back if you have to.
Right. Like I said, we can start with six months, we could start with, with, with nine months. I think that we all understand that this is, this is gonna be a long road, and, and to the mayor's point, when these people open, they're gonna open at 25%. Anybody that studied any business understands if you're only operating at 20% of capacity, you're not making any money. Right? So it, it's gonna take a while even after they open, which is why I don't like the, the language, the word open. Sure. Alderman Wesley, Eugene Wesley?
I, I agree with you on that. I would probably go with nine months. And let me add to this question, are we nullifying the businesses, or how are we doing that? Or do they have to call up?
Manager Mermus, you wanna take that, or Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I can, I can take it if Mr. Mermus has another comment, but find, typically the payment plans are, voluntary is not the right word, but yeah, we don't typically reach out to people and offer them, if they call us and express that they're having difficulty paying their bill, then we do what we can to assist them. Our initial thought would be that this would be the same type of thing. But, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we'll take a different approach, we can, but, you know, we, we're trying also not to give a payment plan to somebody that's been paying their bill and paying bills, and now they can kinda take a break. So that's why we kinda do it as a, you know, if they reach out, then we work with them at the same.
Right. So this is, this is empowering staff to make the plan, not just spreading the word that there is a plan, right? If somebody calls up and they are in trouble, some people probably can pay the bill and, and, and don't wanna push it down the road, and other people might be, you know, hurting. So we look at the businesses that are open, some are functioning at 20%, 30%, 40%, 80% or, or more, so, yeah.
I'm good with.
Okay. So, so I, I think the, do we, do we have a motion on the floor?
We do not yet.
Okay. So, Alderman Wesley, is the motion to approve and change the language to, instead of the phase three, phase four, to nine months?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I, I do.
Mayor, please.
So Brad, this is basically geared to those that have been shut down and whatnot. What happens with the company that have been open at full force? Are they gonna be allowed to sit on not paying for nine months?
So I think, I think that this goes to the point that Steph brought up, that they're not gonna broadcast this, that we're, we're just giving them the ability or flexibility to work with businesses that are hurting. Right?
Well, how do you establish a?
Well, first, they would have to call up and say that I'm hurting, right? That I can't pay the bill. And we kinda know what businesses are open or not open, right? So I'm not envisioning the Joel, I get that that would be a concern, that the Joel all of a sudden wants to not pay their water and say they're, they're hurting, but, you know, at a certain point, I gotta leave some of that up to staff to navigate that conversation and deal with that.
This is Alderman Messina, can I be heard?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Can we set some criteria so that we can establish hardship? Or so that they have to establish hardship?
Yeah. Director Wilson, do you wanna address that, or Manager Mermus, either one?
Good question.
Yeah, so purposely, there's not a lot of documentation on payment plans right now with the residential side, cause we do evaluate each one on a case-by-case basis. You know, so I think, you know, we kinda have a pretty good feel of what businesses are open, which ones aren't, and we would look at the, the usage history as well. See, I mean, if, if somebody normally used 20,000 gallons and they've been at 2,000 for the last four months, okay, that makes sense, they've been, they've been shut down, so that would kind of prove out some hardship. If you have somebody who, you know, go next door to Joel, you know, go to Target, they've used 50,000 gallons all the way through with the full parking lot, I think it's gonna be a little bit harder for them to prove that out, given water usage. So it'll probably base it a lot on the consumption patterns on a year-over-year basis, and then over the past few months, to see if their consumption's dropped significantly, to prove that they've been exposed to some hardship in some way. Short of that, I'm not sure, aside from getting, you know, sales reports or something, how we would prove hardship in that case, and then how amenable the businesses would be to give that information up, but if that's something the council wants us to kinda dive into, we certainly could. But right now, we kinda.
Can I add a follow-up?
Sure. Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Is that, I know there's, it's almost just some criteria, it sounds like it's subjective. Is there a process or a checks and balance that either is in place or we can incorporate?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so, you are correct, Alderman Messina, that, that it is a little bit of a subjective review on the part of staff. There is, every payment plan, though, does have to sign an agreement that they've had some hardship and that they agree to the terms of the payment plan itself, you know, via current bill plus however much per month. So, we could, you know, if we wanted to include hardship language in that agreement, or like if we could take it a step further and try to get some, you know, the county for their property tax saying they have a hardship agreement, or looking at something like that. So we could, we could look to do something like that. We have a little bit of time before we just to pick off anybody, so if we want to do that, to find a job, we could, we could look into that for sure.
One final follow-up?
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's kinda where I got the idea. I saw, yeah, if we could kinda mirror what the county's doing with that hardship, that might give us some ideas, that would be appreciated.
Certainly, we can, we can look into that for sure.
Okay. So we can, you can look at that and bring that when it comes to the council meeting, right?
City Manager here, I was gonna chime in.
Sure. Mr. Mermus?
Yeah, for, actually, for the three finance and admin committee items that were on the docket tonight, for not only just direction purpose, but for expediency, there really, we did not feel that there was a need for council approval. Typically, on these type of things, we go with the committee direction. It's not like we're passing an ordinance for this. So we were planning on actually just getting council direction and then implementing, and we certainly could develop the hardship form, and I could distribute that to you, though.
Okay. Alderman Messina, is that okay? Cause I know that you, you've got some.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, would be great. Appreciate it.
All right. Jeff, you're gonna put something together and then email it?
Correct, correct. I just didn't want, I just didn't wanna leave you hanging, if you don't see it on the council agenda next week, we're gonna implement it, but you'll get, you'll get the form.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion and we have a second. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, this is on a case-by-case basis, right? I mean, if they don't come in, they don't come in. We're not sitting there telling everyone to come in, right?
Correct, correct. We're not gonna broadcast the program.
All right.
All right. Okay. Roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
That passes. Next is liquor license and video gaming fee waiver, cause they're connected, so I'm gonna add the language. In, in this, I, I wanted to make a comment that we were carving out some of the licenses, specific categories, and for some reason, I can't open my thing up right now. So, I would prefer to see the language that everybody's equal. I understand the reasoning behind kinda carving out a few people, but I personally don't like to be the guy that picks the winners and losers, and then we get into the people that are marginally running and going, you're charging me, and that business is open, that's really their function, a carryout business, so they're really operating at 80%, I'm only operating at 40%, you know, and compared to other stores. So, I personally would like to see if we're gonna waive these fees, that we waive them for everybody across the board and, and make it even, just like we're making everything else even.
I'm second your motion, if that's your motion.
That is my motion.
The second, we, we do forego all licenses for liquor, gaming, for all establishments.
All renewal licenses.
All right, correct. All, all renewal licenses.
Correct.
For the liquor and the video gaming. So. Sure. Alderman Messina?
No, it's Catalano.
I had, well, I had my hand raised, but I actually had a clap. I was trying to raise my hand.
I, I saw your hand, not even, so I.
So. Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Yeah. And, and I would agree with Alderman Arkwoods, you know, some of these ones, the, some of the ones that we were gonna keep the license fee still going, I mean, the Jules, the Target, the Franks, I mean, you know, they had a lot, to put out a lot of unnecessary money that they weren't exposed to, hand sanitizer, overtime, had to come, have somebody come and do professional cleaning and sanitizing. They're out a lot of money that they would never have anticipated to be out, and I don't think they made up for that, all those costs.
Right. That, that, that's a good point. That's what I say, is when, when we get into start choosing and picking, then we get into the, the arguments of, you know, well, that guy had to do this, and I, I only could do this, and he sold more than I sold, you know, the, the mini mart gas station is hurt more than the, the carryout pizza place, or, or order pizza place. And I, I don't wanna be the guy that, I don't mind studying policy, but I don't wanna pick and choose who the winners are. That's my thought process.
Can I be recognized, Alderman?
Sure. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, this is directed to Director Wilson. I mean, how, how much are we talking about as far as money-wise?
$65,000.
On the ones that?
All, all.
Director Wilson, if we separate out, separate the ones that were carved out, I think when we talked earlier, that number was 17.5? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct, yes.
Oh, okay. Not a problem. Thank you.
Hey, may I ask a question?
Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
So, tonight, were you approving another liquor license tonight? A new one?
That's a new one.
That's a new one.
That's not a renewal, that's different.
Okay, so we, we're gonna charge them the right, okay, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. So we have a, a motion and second, if there's no other questions, roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
That passes. Next is dial-a-ride fee waiver. Mr. Wilson, do you wanna touch on this, or?
Yeah, just real briefly, you know, we still have, as you can see, the ridership numbers have gone down dramatically since the COVID-19 pandemic has really started in mid-March. And in talking to Director Lang and Mr. Hastings, the predominance of ridership are elderly going to required medical appointments, and then also some of them going to the grocery store. Both of those seem like things that, you know, one would need to do normally, but especially during this time, there's a heightened risk associated with any of that. Aside from that, that class of people, for anybody really, but really for that class of people, who's doing it to waive the fees. I know, again, Alderman Woods, they put in here until phase four, but we need to make it, you know, six months or whatever, that, that's fine. Just, you know, like I said, they're, they're a higher risk category to go out in the first place, but it is necessities that they're going out for, so we thought it would be something nice for them to not charge them to go on those trips.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly think it's a good idea, and especially.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
How many months?
And, and should we, on the, to the motioner and the seconder, just to be consistent, can we keep the language, instead of going with the phase three, phase four, and just do the nine months?
Then we revisit it.
Okay. Does the seconder agree?
Did he say nine months?
Yes.
I'm, I'm good with that. I agree.
And then we'll just revisit it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, are there any other questions on, on the dial-a-ride?
Yeah, I have a question.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
This is a kind of unrelated to what we're talking about, but the dial-a-ride, I know we sanitize all our vehicles, was this vehicle was included in that, that? Mr. Mermus?
Yeah, I can, I can jump in real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Mermus.
Yeah, we, all, all city vehicles were included in the program, we've done that twice now. Additionally, the dial-a-ride actually has probably the most extensive cleaning protocols just because of the democra, the demographic that uses the van. That's probably the cleanest van in the whole city of Wooddale. So yes, it has actually extra cleanings for the dial-a-ride vans.
Nice. Can we, Mr. Mermus, can we put out something, a piece, whether it's on Facebook or, or whatever, addressing that, cause I'm sure that, especially for seniors, that that's a big concern, to kinda remove or alleviate some of that fear of getting into the vehicle?
Certainly, we could, we, we can try to craft something. I, I wanna just caution everyone, though, it's not like we wanna necessarily promote seniors driving around unless they, you know, they have to, they absolutely have to. So we've been trying to kinda balance knowing, you know, letting people know it's available, but not necessarily trying to promote them to drive somewhere, so it's kind of a.
Right, yeah. I, I, I get that, but just in the promotion of that it's there, add the cleaning. I'm not saying try to get more people out of the house.
For sure, for sure.
I, just, just that, for those people who do, and, and again, as, as we've said, and we know that a lot of people use this to go to the doctor, and we also know today that a lot of people that should be going to the doctor aren't going to the doctor, which is not a good thing. So, again, I'm not trying to get more people out of the house than need to be out of the house, I'm just trying to alleviate maybe some potential fear that they would have getting in that van, and, and maybe some comfort knowing that we clean it every day, you know? So, we have a, a motion, a second, if there's no other questions, roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
That passes. That's the end of my report, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, we're adjourned.
Public Health, Safety, Judiciary and Ethics Committee, uh, call to order. Uh, let the minute taker note that all attendees are the same as previously noted. Uh, I need a uh motion for an approval of minutes of our meeting on March 12, 2020, Public Health, Safety, Judiciary. Okay, any questions? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Posed as an aye. All right, report and recommendation?
I make the motion approval of the liquor license.
Second.
Okay.
Who's this for?
Roll call, please?
Wait, what?
It is for the White 7-Eleven on Irving and uh Wooddale Road, Addison Road.
Any questions? It's an ordinance amending chapter five, Article Three, Section Five Point Three Oh Five of the municipal code of the city of Wooddale to increase the number of Class GS liquor licenses authorized for issuance, specifically the 7-Eleven at Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Addison Road. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Addison and Irving. Uh, no other questions, I'll have a roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
And that's looking good. Uh, any items to be considered at future meetings, gentlemen?
Do you have one?
What was that?
Would you have one?
Um, now I do it?
Yes.
Okay, Public Health and Safety at a future meeting. I want to uh discuss the DuPage County Senior Citizens Council request for uh funding. All right, if there's nothing else? Pardon me? There was a letter issued on April 2nd. You guys want to maybe find it, read it, there's some enclosures in there. Uh, we're looking at about eight thousand. No future uh considerations? I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
So yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned, gentlemen. Stay well, stay safe.
Ciao for now.
Have you well? If you're giving out free haircuts, let me know.